Melton, Pauls, Thompson, Mr. President.
Here. All, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and the Imocation.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, please bless this new council as we begin our earthly work. Please help us to make wise decisions for the taxpayers over the next four years. Amen.
City Clerk, certified publication on daily record on June 7th, knows for a great council and regular city council meeting June 11th, 2013. A current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Omaha City Council. This meeting is conducted in public and by law may only address the topics listed on the published agenda. The council will hear testimony but will not engage in debate of issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it's not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. These actions only detract from the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn off or mute any electronic devices or phones. Mr. Clerk.
Zoning ordinance on final ring and plan for attachments, item number five, ordinance to rezon property located at 5800 Fowler Avenue from R3 to R5 Urban Family Residential District, A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on item number five begins now. Are there any proponents?
Near Jaggarwall for the applicant, 105 North 31st Avenue, 68131.
Thank you. Okay, would you like to make a statement or?
No, I'm just here to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you. Any other proponents? Any opponents? Seeing none, public carions closed.
One.
Opponent, please come down. Would you like to speak?
My name is Carol Moss. I live at 5005 North 50 Fifth Street, 68104, in the vicinity of the proposed housing rezoning.
And do you have any specific concerns you'd like to share?
Well, I just, I've lived in the neighborhood for 16 years and my daughter, I'm actually here on her behalf as well. She just bought a house at 5911 Fowler and our concern is that it's going to increase the number of cars in the area. Most of the houses in that area are owner occupied or even the renters, because I've lived there a long time, I know a lot of people. It's not, it's not a high transit area. People don't usually come and go, they stay. And it's not that I'm against anyone with low income housing, I just think it could be better suited with houses built there and sold and maybe sell to people that don't, you know, have the opportunity. Maybe she could finance and, and sell the houses instead of renting them. And it would, it would fit the neighborhood better. We've already got some apartments up there and there's not a lot of trouble, but they're, you know, I think that's enough for our neighborhood. And I drive by there every day and the houses, the neighborhood, that area's been fenced off for about two months and the grass is this high. I mean, as a good neighbor, she really hasn't made any effort even to maintain the property. And that's my concern, if she's not doing anything now, what's going to happen when tenants move in?
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other opponents today? Anyone else in opposition? Seeing none, public carions closed.
Revoke.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Jaggarwall, if you can come back to the microphone, please. One of the concerns they had, one of the concerns that the neighbor raised had to do with, is that, tell me what type of housing this is going to be?
At this time, it hasn't been really determined if it's going to be restricted to affordable housing or not. I guess that issue hasn't been finalized right now.
Okay.
But we will probably know within the next three to six months as far as if it will be restricted as far as income.
Okay. Will it, will it, let me ask, Mr. Crowe, will they come back before the city council again once they determine what, what the income level is going to be?
Let me push that onto planning, I'm not sure it would.
Okay.
James Dale City Planning, the zoning does not deal with the tenure of the occupant.
Okay. Okay. And how big, how big are the units going to be?
I believe they will be all two and three bedrooms. As far as square footage, that I'm not exactly sure. I think it will be two floors with a garage. I think square footage will be roughly 2,000 square feet on average.
Will it be owner occupied or rented?
Rented.
Rented.
Yes, just feasibility determined, that was the viable option. Owner occupied wasn't really a possibility given the layout neighborhood and the costs involved.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
I'll ask a question too. Can you comment, or Mr. Thiel, can you comment about the concern about traffic? I imagine there were some comments at Planning Board about that and how that's handled in this rezoning?
Yes, we understand. I mean, there will be higher density, especially with respect to what's currently in the neighborhood. We will do whatever we can, the owner will, as far as entering into agreements with tenants, as far as making sure, I guess cars aren't kept on the road, that they do utilize the garage and that they don't have, I guess, multiple cars clawing up the street. As far as any other steps we can take to actually control parking, we will take those measures. And we've discussed this with other neighborhood individuals who attended a public hearing at the Benson Public Library about two months ago.
Okay. Thank you.
Just one other question. Let me ask, just one other question. Is there, is there going to be a consideration for market rate as opposed, as opposed to low income?
That is possibility. I think right now, determination, I guess, the market rate versus affordable housing restriction really depends on what happens in the next few months as far as financing and determining sources of financing. So it is possibility that all 12 units could be market rates, it could be split evenly. We really haven't determined that at this time, just waiting on certain issues to flesh out.
Okay. Just personally, because I'm, it's in my district and, and my preference would be that there'd be some, at least some market rate in there as well, so that, so that there's some, some necessity for people to, you know, want to be there and want to stay there and, and pay the kind of rent necessary to, to be there. So, you know, I understand the neighbor's concerns, but I know we have a, a good developer here, so I, I'll be supportive of it at this point. But for the record, I would just like for there to be some affordable housing, affordable apartments associated with that. All right? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Greig.
Seeing none through the lights, roll call.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's passed seven to zero. We'll take items number six and 17 together. Six is an ordinance to approve an amendment to future land use element of the master plan to expand the mixed use limits of the Exarban Mix Use Center from 233 acres to a total of 349 acres for the property located southwest of 63rd and West Center, 63rd Street and West Center Road. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. And 17 is resolution to implement a platent titled UNO Nebraska Village located southwest of 64th Avenue and West Center Road along attached conditions, never accepted in preparation of final platent, is hereby authorized. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on items number six and number 17 begin today. I will note that the council intends to lay this over three weeks, so if you're here to speak to this item, you certainly can, but you may also want to hold your comments until that point, but I know we'll hear from Mr. Jovan today as the proponent.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the project with others. Yes, we're here today to request a continuation of the public hearing to, I believe, the July 2nd hearing date, so we're going to reserve our right to make a full presentation at that point in time. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other proponents that want to speak today? Are there any opponents that want to speak today? Is there a motion or comment?
Motion to lay over to July 2nd.
Roll call.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's laid over two weeks, seven to zero.
Three weeks.
Or three weeks. Item number seven through nine is one case. Seven is ordinance to amend the boundaries of the major commercial corridor overlay district to incorporate in that district, the property located northeast of 138th and Q Street. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Eight is the platent entitled Buc-Ee's Landmark Plaza Edition is hereby approved. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. And nine is a subdivision agreement is hereby approved.
Public hearing on items numbers seven, eight, and nine are today. Proponents, please.
Matthew J. Manning, 4973 Dodge Street, on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you. Any other proponents here today? Any opponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, public carions closed.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
They're all passed, seven to zero. A 10 through 13 is one case. 10 is ordinance to rezon property located southeast of 168th and Ida Streets from AG to DR Development Reserve District. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. 11 is the platent entitled Camp Legacy Place is hereby approved. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. 12 subdivision agreement is hereby approved. 13 is a special use permit to allow outdoor sports and recreation in a DR Development Reserve District is hereby approved. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public carions on items number 10, 11, 12, and 13 are today. Proponents, please.
Jason Thielin, E&amp;A Consulting Group, 117 North 117th Street, here for the applicant, here, be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents here today? Seeing none, any opponents here today? Seeing none, public carions closed.
Motion to close at this time.
Second.
Motion to approve, correct?
Motion to approve.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, President.
Roll call.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
They're all adopted, seven to zero. Item number 14 is an ordinance vacating a segment of the East West Alley between California and Mike Fahey Streets from 16th to 17th Street. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on item number 14 is today.
Was held.
Public hearing was held, I'm sorry, on June 4th. It can be passed today, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Roll call.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Passed seven to zero. Item number 15, ordinance vacating the California Street from 16th to 17th. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend denial. B Communications opposing.
Public hearing on this item was held on June 4th and can be passed today, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Roll call.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Passed seven to zero. Item number 16, ordinance vacating the north-south alley between 18th Street and Florence Boulevard from Charles Street to Clark Street. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on item number 16 was held on June 4th.
Motion to approve.
Roll call.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Passed seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7, if agenda items number 18 through 19 should be laid over two weeks for publication and public hearing, pursuant to City Council Rule 7E, agenda item number 20, should be laid over two weeks for publication and public hearing. Liquor. Item number 21 is vines and branch, vines plus branch, 1125 Jackson Street, class C liquor license, due application, new location.
Public hearing on item number 21 is today. Proponents, please.
Linda Cummings, member of Vine and Branch.
Tish Rasmussen, member of Vine and Branch.
And your address, please.
The home address or?
Either's fine.
Okay, 1125 Jackson Street, Omaha, Nebraska.
Thank you.
Um, that's it?
Okay.
Okay.
Are there other proponents? Anyone else wants to speak in favor today? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public carions closed.
Motion to approve.
Roll call.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted, seven to zero. Item number 22, Buc-Ee's Express, number 38, 137, 36th Q Street, packaged liquor license, new application, new location. We have communications supporting it.
Bob Deesing, 1005 East Aberdeen Drive, Papillion, Nebraska, representative of Buc-Ee's.
Thanks, Bob. The public hearing on item number 21, 22 starts now, and Bob is a proponent, as noted. Are there any other proponents here today? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public carions closed.
Second.
I saw the councilman, Pauls was just dying to make that first, that first motion. Nice job. Roll call, please. Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Item number 23, Chef Adams, 4963 Center Street, request permission for a change of location of the present packaged liquor license to 1228 South 6th Street.
Public, public hearing on item number 20.
And A is a change of location of their catering license as well.
Thank you. Public hearing on item number 23 is today. Proponents?
Hi, John Haddam with Chef Haddam Catering, 1228 South 6th.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Anyone else in here in favor? Seeing none, any opponents? Please come down and state your name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Rob DeLutry, this is my wife Deb DeLutry. Long life native to the neighborhood, family's been there for 100 years. This is not the place for a packaged liquor license. We've got a park half a block away, a lot of kids walking across the street unsupervised just to go to the park across the street. We're going to end up with broken beer bottles, people sleeping in the park. We've seen it before, this neighborhood has been, what's the word?
It's been blighted because of the changes.
Go up to the mic, please.
Hi, I'm Deb DeLutry. Our area has been blighted by certain changes that this council has already seemed fit to change. We've got a one-way street that's just halfway.
Let me talk about the license.
Yeah, that has changed big trucks.
That's another subject.
The liquor license going from the location they're currently in to our location, which was a small restaurant, not packaged liquor. Not packaged liquor. When we have packaged liquor, we've got people who are homeless sleeping in a park across the street. We have had to already encourage increased police.
Patrols.
Yeah, patrols in our neighborhood because of the increase in vagrancy and.
And a lot of rental properties, there's five families living in a tiny house now down there.
Packaged liquor is going to cause increased crime in our neighborhood and personally, that's going to put my family at risk.
And all the other children that go to the park.
Yeah.
And we've talked to many of the other neighbors that are native to the neighborhood and they're against it, they're hoping you'll do the right thing here, because this is the wrong for our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Anyone else in opposition that wants to speak today? Seeing none, I'm going to close public hearing, but I know we have questions from councilmen and chairmen.
Yes, would the proponent come back up, please?
Yes, sir.
Would you take a few minutes to take us through and describe your business plan?
Yes, sir.
As I understand, this is the old Cafe de Paris, which is Q Consumables and then Italian Gardens?
It is.
So what are you planning to do?
Cafe de Paris, I am a caterer. I've had a catering business and a license for eight years now. I do not sell packaged liquor, that's not the licenses there for, it's a D and a K. I serve, I can serve liquor on site there for private parties. Like I said, I've never sold packaged liquor and I don't believe that's what the license is there for.
So you're asking for a K to help support your catering activities and the D to do what?
I'm not familiar with exactly the difference is.
All right. Why don't we just take a minute and talk a little bit about your business plan as Mr. Mungard makes his way down here? Go ahead, tell us about what you're going to be doing.
Oh, I'm going to do private, private parties on site and I do parties off-site as well.
Okay.
Catering, private dining. I believe the Cafe de Paris had a liquor license on site for 40 years plus.
So the perception that some of the neighbors have or concerns with regard to your license application being turning the premises into a retail package store.
Oh, absolutely not.
And you would agree then that you won't conduct your business in a way to have package sales there?
Oh, absolutely not.
You absolutely agree with that?
Yes, I agree. I am just doing, serving alcohol to people that come and schedule parties.
Mr. Mungard?
Tom Mungard, Deputy City Attorney.
Why don't you take a minute to help educate the neighbors as to the different types of licenses needed and the applicant has said this will not be a off-sale retail package business and within his application, is there the legal ability of the city to hold him to that promise?
Well, as I'm reading the application, he has a package license and a catering license. That would allow him to sell only, that would not allow him to allow, to have consumption on the premises. He would have to, and this description of the private party somewhat confuses me. Yeah, there, there could be a way that he sells to somebody in a package situation and then rents them space and they have a private party there and that would be compliance, but he could not operate those premises in, in any way that would be a bar where people would come in and purchase alcohol.
Okay, so onsite consumption is not permitted with the type of license he has applied for? Or could he through the K license do that?
Well, the K license allows him to sell elsewhere, or to sell for, allows him to cater elsewhere.
So he could take his liquor to City Hall or Scholmer Building if someone hired him and he could have a bar there that he sold alcohol in?
Yes.
And with regard to.
And that would, that would have to be in conjunction with a special designated license.
So with regard to onsite consumption, the D, and he represents that he's applied for a D and I don't remember seeing that, so what, what? Do you agree that a D would basically be the off-sale?
A D is off-sale only, it has no privilege to drink on the premises.
All right. So why don't we have the applicant come back up? We usually see D licenses with convenience stores.
Oh, I didn't know that. That's the license that I've been carrying for seven, eight years now in the catering business.
It, it appears to me if you want to have onsite consumption and then the ability to have, take your business elsewhere to cater and have liquor.
Right, that's primarily what I do.
You need probably an I or a C and a K.
I plan to apply for something like that in the fall, I believe is the next opportunity.
Okay.
I'm just transferring it over from my former business to where I'm at now because I'm continuing to cater.
It would appear to me, and maybe Mr. Mungard can answer this, that he should have an I and a C and a K. Or I or C, okay.
Tom Mungard, Deputy City Attorney. From what we hear today, yes, that's correct. You're not really here to see what kind of license he should have, because all he's asking for is a change of location. You judge whether the license that he has now should or should not be at the new location. Now, if he's operating improperly under that license, whole different question, that isn't before you today. But you're right that if he is, if he's a D, I don't want to approve a D off-sale convenient type operation at that proposed location. I mean, it doesn't make sense. That's really the only lawful use of that type of a license at that location would be to sell for packaged people to take away.
Procedurally, could he amend his move today or would we need a layover to accommodate that? Or you can't do either?
If he wanted to go beyond just changing location of his current license and upgrade his license to a license that allow, a C or an I that would allow people to drink on the premises, he would have to indefinitely delay this. Most efficiently it'd be to start over again with an application for a different kind of a license. But you can't decide today whether he should be, he cannot amend this to ask for a C or an I.
But if we approve this today and he wanted to open up a, a package store, he could.
Yes.
And so the neighbor's concerns that that's something they fear, even though I'm sure this gentleman is upstanding, if, if he changes mind, he could have a package store there.
If you allow him to move his current package license to this location, yes, he could sell package out of that location.
But if he withdrew it and filed a new application, Mr. Brown, approximately how many days would it be before it were back before us?
Depends on how. About. Buster Brown City Talk, depends on how quickly we get it from Lincoln, but it's probably going to be somewhere about 45 days.
Right.
Now, could, could he make a commitment not to sell anything and less allow him to transfer and then at the same time he would apply for a new license to, you know?
Not to sell anything.
Sell anything on premises to take out, you know, just to use it as a catering license only?
Yes. If he, if he told you that if you allow him to move his location, he will sell only package and only through a catering situation, that would mean there would be no consumption on those premises, that all of his sales would have to be a package sales that go someplace else, private party or an event someplace else. And so it would operate much like any of the other package stores where people come in, make their selection and walk away with sealed bottles and cans. He could do that and if that, if he makes that representation that he's not going to use his dining room here for any kind of activity, then we can enforce that through some sort of discipline against his existing license.
Well, why don't we have the applicant step back up? And I'd just tell it the two new members, things aren't normally this complicated. I don't know. Would you agree if there were a motion to recommend approval that you would, as a condition of that recommendation, agree not to have any off-sale other than through your K license, which means catering elsewhere for weddings and things elsewhere?
Yes.
Until such time as you file your application for new license for the type of use onsite consumption?
That's the plan I'm doing. I just wanted to transfer it.
And will you do that, agree that you'll make that change in application within the next thirty days?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I can do that.
Is that good enough, Mr. Mungard? Okay, that's my motion. With that condition and representation, I'd have-
Absolutely. I have never sold packaged liquor and I wasn't intending on selling packaged liquor. I think some of the-
I agree with you, but I think you'd understand-
Some of my neighbors have been quarreling with me about the parking down there as well because they keep liking to park in my parking lot and behind my shop and I've had some curt words with some of these people and I think that's why they're making it work.
Let's keep this relevant to your application.
Yes, sir.
And let's suggest you join the neighborhood association. There's two down there. There's the Old Market South Neighborhood that meets monthly up at the old St. Joe's Center penthouse and there's the Dahlman Park Neighborhood Association and then there's kind of the unofficial mayor. One of the Vendettis I'm sure could take you around, introduce you to your neighbors. So being a good neighbor is sometimes opening lines of communication and not being adversarial, but that's my motion.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Jerem. There's a motion and a second. Mr. Gernant.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just for the record, I've attended both of the neighborhood associations that Mr. Jerem has mentioned since the beginning of the year and I've got to tell you, this wasn't even remotely on their radar screen. I don't think that the majority of both of those neighborhoods had a problem with operating a catering license, catering operation from that location. They would love to see that building being occupied and used, either food industry or something along those lines. I can remember hearing that distinctly from the membership of both of those organizations. So, and I would have to agree with the Law Department, we're here for this change of location. But I would definitely support that condition as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Seeing no further lights, roll call. Gernant?
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Mr. President?
Yes. It's approved with the restrictions seven to zero.
If you thought, if you have, you may on tomorrow. Thank you very much.
Item number twenty-four, Bishop's Bar and Grill, nineteen oh one Harney Street. Request permission for an addition of the present Class E liquor license of a sidewalk cafe approximately forty-one by seven feet to the north. Public hearing on item number twenty-four begins now. Proponents?
Matt Bishop, owner of Bishop's Bar and Grill, nineteen oh one Harney Street.
Are there any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you. If you could come back up, sir? Name again.
Matt Bishop.
Matt, how many chairs are you going to be able to put out there?
We're looking at either, probably like three to four tables, about two to three chairs per table.
Okay.
We might cut it down to three and do like a picnic table out there.
Okay.
There's a couple of different ideas right now.
It seems like it's pretty narrow, but you've looked at it over and thought it through?
Yeah. I mean, it comes out about seven feet. A couple of the pillars make it like five and a half to six feet, but for the most part, there's enough room.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jerem?
Yes.
Do you have a right-of-way lease from the city for the space? It's under review.
Buster Brown, City Clerk, he has, he has applied for and it's currently under review, says here.
So, did anyone make a motion and if you did, was it contingent upon him getting all the proper leases and permits from the city? Okay, that would be my motion.
Second. Motion and a second? Roll call. Gernant?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President? Yes. It's approved with the condition seven to zero. Item number twenty-eight is Noel's Golf Course. Request permission to appoint David Malone manager. We have a request from the Parks Division to allow withdrawal of this application.
So moved.
Roll call.
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President? Yes. They're all adopted, seven to zero. Item number thirty-eight is Resolution that the attached Fairfield Building LLC Tax and Financing Redevelopment Project Plan for the redevelopment project site located at twelve thirteen Harney Street with the proposed complete rehabilitation and reuse of a four-story historic former, an aquarium building is hereby approved. Public hearing on item number thirty-eight is today. Proponents, please.
Cassie Seagren, Mayor's Office on behalf of City Planning. I'm here to present the plan. The building itself is a mixed-use project, approximately four stories with the first floor being a mix of commercial space, some residential on two through four, approximately twelve units. There is TIF involved in with this and it does conform to the master plan. And if there's any other questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you. Congratulations on your new appointment.
Thank you.
Any other proponents here today? Any opponents? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Roll call. Gernant?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President? Yes. They're all adopted, seven to zero. Item number thirty-eight is Resolution that the detached Fairfield Building LLC Tax and Financing Redevelopment Project Plan for the redevelopment project site located at twelve thirteen Harney Street with the proposed complete rehabilitation and reuse of a four-story historic former, an aquarium building is hereby approved. Public hearing on item number thirty-eight is today. Proponents, please.
Cassie Seagren, Mayor's Office on behalf of City Planning. I'm here to present the plan. The building itself is a mixed-use project, approximately four stories with the first floor being a mix of commercial space, some residential on two through four, approximately twelve units. There is TIF involved in with this and it does conform to the master plan. And if there's any other questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you. Congratulations on your new appointment.
Thank you.
Any other proponents here today? Any opponents? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Roll call. Gernant?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President? Yes. They're all adopted, seven to zero. Item number thirty-eight is Resolution that the attached Fairfield Building LLC Tax and Financing Redevelopment Project Plan for the redevelopment project site located at twelve thirteen Harney Street with the proposed complete rehabilitation and reuse of a four-story historic former, an aquarium building is hereby approved. Public hearing on item number thirty-eight is today. Proponents, please.
Cassie Seagren, Mayor's Office on behalf of City Planning. I'm here to present the plan. The building itself is a mixed-use project, approximately four stories with the first floor being a mix of commercial space, some residential on two through four, approximately twelve units. There is TIF involved in with this and it does conform to the master plan. And if there's any other questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you. Congratulations on your new appointment.
Thank you.
Any other proponents here today? Any opponents? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Roll call. Gernant?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President? Yes. They're all adopted, seven to zero. Item number thirty-nine is Resolution that the public hearing on item number thirty-nine shall be held on the third reading. Orders on second reading, item number forty, orders to approve appropriations appropriating vacant and improved properties located in the Prospect Village redevelopment plan area. Public hearing on item number forty begins now. Are there any proponents here today? Seeing none, any opponents? Seeing none, public hearings closed.
Will you approve it?
Second.
Roll call. Gernant?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President? Yes. It's adopted, seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule Seventy, the public hearing on item number thirty-nine shall be held on the third reading. Orders on second reading, item number forty, orders to approve appropriations appropriating vacant and improved properties located in the Prospect Village redevelopment plan area. Public hearing on item number forty begins now. Are there any proponents here today? Seeing none, any opponents? Seeing none, public hearings closed. We'll take item forty-one, forty-two, one public hearing. Forty-one is orders to approve appropriations appropriating property located at twenty-eight sixteen North Nineteenth Street for use in the consolidated plan and forty-two is the declaration says the appropriating property at forty-two oh three Burdette Street for use in the consolidated plan. Public hearing on items number forty-one and forty-two are today. Any proponents here today that want to speak? Seeing none, any opponents? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Item number forty-three, orders approving a redevelopment tax and financing loan agreement between the city and fourteen oh five Harney LLC to implement the fourteen oh five Harney project redevelopment plan located at fourteen oh five, fourteen oh seven Harney. Public hearing on item number forty-three is today. Are there any proponents that want to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents today? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Item number forty-four, orders to approve a workers' compensation third-party administration services agreement between the city and Corvell Enterprises Comp Incorporated. Public hearing on item number forty-four is today. Do we have any proponents? Ms. Unger?
Good afternoon, everyone. Stephanie Unger, City of Omaha Benefits Manager. The Human Resources Department recently committed, completed a thorough and lengthy request for proposal process to select a third-party administrator for the city's workers' compensation program. The evaluation process was based upon several approaches, including an independent evaluation by our benefits consultant, Silverstone, interviews by all respondents to the request for proposal and a vote by the evaluation committee consisting of members from the Fire Department, Police Department, the Law Department, Human Resources and Silverstone. Based upon the information presented in the proposals and the oral interviews that we conducted, the evaluation committee voted unanimously to award the contract to Corvell. Corvell is a national workers' compensation third-party administrator to many private employers and governmental agencies. With the city's workers' compensation, workers' compensation costs in two thousand and twelve at six point one million, the stakes are too high and we need to do this right. There is no question workers' compensation costs are a major concern for the new administration, the council and taxpayers. Understanding the factors that are driving these costs is pertinent and it is imperative to align ourselves with strategic partners that are acutely aware of our financial challenges and can provide us long-term strategic, actionable recommendations to our current workers' compensation program while ensuring our employees receive the best care for their injuries. We believe Corvell will further the new administrations and council's desire for more cost savings. Taxpayer dollars are at stake and the steps we take from here to control our workers' compensation costs are crucial. I have representatives from Silverstone, Corvell and the evaluation committee here and we are available to answer questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents here today? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Mr. Jerem?
Yes, Stephanie. And I don't want to understate the importance of this because when you say that the number of dollars paid in two thousand and twelve was six point one million for work comp claims, that's an attention getter. And wondered if you've studied that in relation to other municipalities or other employers of comparable size to see how the City of Omaha ranks, ranks in terms of the expenditures that we're making compared to other municipalities or employers? It seems to me that's a big number.
Stephanie Unger, City Benefits Manager. I have not made a comparison, but perhaps our representatives from Corvell can maybe speak to their experience. They do have experience with other governmental agencies and can speak to the comparison.
Mark Bertles, Corvell Corporation, ninety-four oh one Dean Creek Parkway, Overland Park, Kansas. We have not done specific comparisons, excuse me, as there are many variables involved here that are different across different municipalities, but I would agree with you that six point one million is a pretty large number for the number of employees that the city has in place today.
Do you know the number of open work comp claims pending in the city currently?
Approximately nine hundred.
So are there more than one claim per employee or are there nine hundred employees with open files?
There's more than one claim for some employees, yes.
Okay. Is that a prevalent statistic or is it, on average, one claim per employee? Then there's some exceptions to that rule.
It's, there are exceptions to that rule. A lot of our customers have employees with more than one claim. How that compares, I really can't say.
What is the average number of new work comp claims per year opened in the City of Omaha?
We average approximately five hundred open workers' compensation claims per year or new claims per year.
How many employees do we have?
We have approximately twenty-six hundred full-time employees and depending upon the time of year, we could have up to a thousand part-time employees who would still be eligible for workers' compensation benefits.
So almost twenty percent of the full-time force, five hundred, twenty-five hundred?
Correct.
Just seems like those numbers are alarming.
They are. Just keep in mind when we moved third-party administrative services from self-administration in-house over to the current third-party administrator we have in March of two thousand and eleven, we had over eighteen hundred claims open. And with this new contract with Corvell, again, a strategic partner that has a national presence and has the experience to help us contain those costs and develop a long-term strategy to help contain our costs, we believe that within the next six months, we could probably decrease the open claims down to approximately five hundred open claims.
And we had a safety director that came on board two or three years ago, isn't that?
Yes, we have.
Is that person still employed?
Yes, that person is still employed, yes.
And has there been any decrease since we've had the hiring of the work, the safety director in terms of the number of claims per year?
We have seen a slight decrease in the number of claims per year and I kind of want to compare it to our OSHA recordables. And I'll just give you a brief history. What an OSHA, OSHA recordable is a injury that requires more than first aid. So if you scratch your finger, you apply antibiotic ointment on it and you put a Band-Aid in it, that's not considered an OSHA recordable injury. If it requires stitches, then it's an OSHA recordable injury. In two thousand and eleven, we had two hundred and eighty-nine OSHA recordable injuries and in two thousand and twelve, we had two hundred and thirty-seven. So we saw an about eleven, twelve percent decrease in OSHA recordables. For the total number of injuries reported in two thousand and eleven, we did see a decrease in two thousand and twelve by two injuries. Two thousand and eleven, we had five hundred and thirteen injuries that were reported and in two thousand and twelve, that decreased to five hundred and eleven. The other thing that I wanted to point out too is that we're seeing, although our number of injuries reported isn't decreasing, I have to say the culture has changed since two thousand and eleven with the initiation of a safety coordinator. Where our supervisors are a little bit more vigilant in reporting injuries where it could be as simple as a scratch on someone's finger to as complex as a rotator cuff tear. It's important that our employees report injuries. I can give you a perfect example. We have had an employee who got a splinter in his thumb, didn't report it, thought he removed it, ended up being embedded in his tendon, required surgery, but didn't report that injury three, until three months later. So it's very important that we promote a culture of reporting every single injury because you do not know what the extent or how complex that injury is and we can maybe, we could have prevented that surgery if there was minor treatment provided to remove that splinter earlier.
Do you keep any statistics with regard to the interdepartmental where we're seeing the most injuries?
We do.
What are you seeing?
Let's see here. Let's see here. Let me just get this information. It's not, no surprise and I think maybe Mark can attest to this too. Our public, our law enforcement, our first responders, our police and fire department, traditionally you do see a higher number of work-related injuries just because of the physical aspect of their job. I have statistics for two thousand and twelve and I'm just going to speak towards OSHA recordables because those are injuries, you know, requiring greater than first aid. In the Fire Department, we saw seventy-four injuries last year. In two thousand and eleven, we saw sixty, so we saw an uptick. But again, I just want to let you know that we are encouraging reporting injuries, how little or complex they are. In police, we saw, we had eighty-four reportable injuries in two thousand and twelve and in two thousand and eleven, we had eleven OSHA reportable injuries. So we saw a decrease of about sixteen percent in that regard. Public Works, which consists of construction, facilities, fleet, Missouri River, Papio River, the sewers, streets and traffic. In two thousand and twelve, again, OSHA recordable injuries were at fifty-seven and in two thousand and eleven, they were eighty-three. So they were down thirty-one percent. Parks, which is forestry, pool, the rec centers. In two thousand and twelve, there were thirty-six OSHA recordable injuries and in two thousand and eleven, we saw thirty-seven, which was down three percent. Planning, we had three injuries in two thousand and twelve and in two thousand and eleven, we saw seven, which was a decrease of fifty-seven percent. So overall, as I mentioned previously, we saw a decrease in OSHA recordable injuries from two thousand and eleven to two thousand and twelve by about eleven to twelve percent. So, overall, as I mentioned previously, we saw a decrease in OSHA recordable injuries from 2011 to 2012 by about 11% to 12%.
And do you keep track of lost time?
We do.
What do you have in that regard?
I can only provide statistics for 2012. Three, approximately $3 million is the total cost for our lost time. We pay out approximately $3 million, and that's a combination of the state statute requirement of payment of lost time, and then we do have labor agreements that require we make the employee whole.
So, if the 6.1 million in work comp expense paid in 2012 is roughly $3 million of that for lost time, or is that over and above the 6.1?
No, that's for lost time. Can I just speak to lost time and how we handle that as well? We encourage every single department to, if we have employees who are recovering from rotator cuff surgery, I have to commend the Police Department and the Fire Department, because they do find light-duty work for those individuals, so that in lieu of paying the lost time benefits that are mandated by the state, we have them sitting and doing whatever they can as far as light-duty work within their restrictions. So, we try to mitigate those costs as much as we can by finding activities or job tasks to do while they have restrictions.
And I've heard some employers or third-party administrators and insurers that handle work comp keep track of the average number of lost days per claim?
Yes, we do, and unfortunately, I don't have that information handy, but I can provide that to you.
And does that go back beyond 2012, or is that just a 2012 stat?
2012, we would only have 2012 information.
Can I have the CorVel representative back up?
Mark Byrdles, CorVel Corporation.
You've been listening to Stephanie.
Sure.
What's your assessment of the state of, if a constituent of mine, a taxpayer of Omaha, were to have heard what you just heard, what would you suggest in terms of responding to that taxpayer that might have concerns to the amount being paid, addressing the cause of these injuries, why we're losing time, why their numbers are so high? What do you suggest?
Well, I think a lot of what they're already doing is a good start with the safety director position, the changing of the culture, which I think is a big part of it. What they're asking us to do going forward is another step, which is to intervene in the claims earlier in the process. Our process is to get a nurse or a medical professional involved as early in the claim as possible, so that not only can we direct the care to the right provider, but we can also assist in providing an advocacy perspective with that employee, so they don't necessarily feel like they need to go out and look for other representation. So, I think continuing the culture that they're building is a big part of that. Part of what we do also is containing the costs, and that means preferred provider networks, pharmacy benefit management, case management services, which assist in getting the employee back to work sooner. Those are all of the things that are part of our program that I think they've had some of in the past, but not the complete package and an integrated model like we provide.
So, the contractual discounts that the city might have through Coventry on its health insurance for employee benefits does not apply to work comp, because that's a different payment source, correct?
Correct, that's correct.
And so, the city then, through CorVel, would be presumably available to access preferred provider discount networks that you have negotiated for work comp referrals that get routed to or present at the approved contracted facilities?
That's correct. We have provider contracts throughout Omaha and the state of Nebraska nationally for that matter, but here in the Omaha area, about 3,000 different providers in our network, all at a discount below the state fee schedule.
And then, with regard to your reviewing payments, is there an audit procedure with regard to making sure that the billed amount gets paid at the discounted amount, and certainly no more than the maximum workers' comp fee schedule approved by the workers' compensation court?
Correct. Part of our program is medical bill review, which does precisely that, applies the fee schedule, then applies the discounted network savings, and then even a nurse review could identify additional savings based on incorrect coding by the medical provider or improper billing of some sort.
So, of the 6.1 million, we heard $3 million is the lost time, presumably that's the temporary total or disability?
Correct.
Where the employee is unable to return to work, or they're partially able to return to work temporarily. What amount of that 6.1 is attributable to the med expenses paid?
If you ask Stephanie for that information. Do you have that?
Medical, including prescription and hospital claims, it's approximately 2.7 million, approximately.
Okay. And is the rest, then, the permanent, partial, or other disability benefits that are owed to the...
Impairment ratings, loss of earnings, vocational rehabilitation, fees that we owe to the state of Nebraska for being self-insured, different things like that, that's correct.
Do the rules with regard to workers' compensation insurers with regard to having claim reserve amounts set aside to handle payment anticipated on a claim apply to the City of Omaha through a third-party administrator like CorVel?
No, because we are self-insured. We don't have any stop-loss.
So, we don't have another pot of money we have to set aside to handle the payment of the claims?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you for answering those questions, and I hope that by going through this exercise, that at least the, I know the current members have been aware of this, but the new members can see, when you look at the city services that are so critical, and we hear from people saying that they, you know, want parks funded, and they want libraries funded, and they want public safety and community policing, the things that cost money when we are expending those on paying workers' comp-related expenses for, in some cases, injuries that are preventable, to severity of injuries, as you outlined, the one case that could be far diminished. This is an area where the city is expending annually a huge sum of money, that hopefully, we can all dedicate ourselves to supporting an effort like this to reduce those expenses. So, I for one, hope and wish for your success, and we'll be supporting it.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Yes, I know that we're all looking at committees and different things that we're going to do the second time around, and Councilman Jerome, you sound like you'd be a good candidate for the personnel HHR committee with all the questions and the knowledge, so I just thought I'd throw that out there, sir.
Got to be careful what you say these days, right? Seeing no further lights, next item, please.
Item number forty-five, orders to approve an agreement between the City of Omaha and the City of Lincoln on behalf of the Lincoln Police Department to write overtime funding for six Lincoln Police Officers assigned to Project Safe Neighborhoods and Night Life Operations.
Public hearing on item number forty-five is today. Any proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Seeing none, public hearings closed.
Item number forty-six, orders to amend Omaha Civil Code, section 687 and 6157, to clarify to whom they apply and more clearly state that violations carry criminal penalties.
Public hearing on item number forty-six is today. Any proponents? Any opponents? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do know that later in the year, we will be getting a package from the Humane Society regarding fees and rules and structures and rewording, but city legal, this here pretty much is from, this originated from the prosecutor's office, is that correct?
Paul Kratz, City Attorney, I believe so, yes.
And this has to do with being able to clean up language, which allows us then to enforce what's currently on the books, is that correctly?
That's correct. There was some confusion, and this helps making it clearer.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Seeing no further lights, next item.
Item forty-seven, the Land Reutilization Commission transmits financial statements and independent audits reports for the year ending December 31, 2012. We need a motion to receive and place on file.
Roll call.
Gernat, Gray, Jerome, Melton, Pauls, Thompson. Mr. President?
Yes.
Please don't file seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule Seventy, the public hearing agenda items number forty-eight through fifty shall be held on the third reading. Pursuant to City Council Rule Seventy, the public hearing on jet items number fifty-one through fifty-eight shall be held on the second reading. Item number fifty-nine is Chairman and Board of Equalizations report approval of the plans of assessments at the regular meeting held June 4, 2013. We need a motion to approve.
Roll call.
Gernat, Gray, Jerome, Melton, Pauls, Thompson. Mr. President?
Yes. Roll call.
Gernat, Gray, Jerome, Melton, Pauls, Thompson. Mr. President?
Yes. Thank you.